It's Thursday, 7 o'clock, November 17, 2016. Calling the Board of Selectmen, meeting for the town to order. First item in business, approval of the minutes, November 10. Looked at them, they look good to me. Unless there's a...somebody wants to change something, I'd make a motion or entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written for November 10, 2016.
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Public comment, hearing none. Tax classification hearing.
Is the public comment... Hold on one second. I think there is a public comment.
Oh, there is public...
I'm sorry. I don't know when to...I've never done it. That's all. Can I ask you to say, do I come forward now?
That's it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You just gotta raise...
All right, I know, I know. Spell it out.
Just, no, raise the microphone.
That's what I was actually saying.
All right. Not that short, but...
You can raise it up more.
Can you hear me okay?
You can raise it up more.
It's fine, you can hear me.
This is good. I'm Caitlin Stanton, and I live on the Comus Road in Hingham. And I was actually talking to Tom on and off about this situation, and I wanted to come and I had...I wanted to request that an unused portion of my old renovation permit be credited towards a new building permit. I own a home that was vandalized, and after we gutted the property, we...it was clear that it wasn't salvageable. So we paid $1,690 for the renovation permit, and that means the renovation cost was $169,000. And $14,000 of that was used. And that permit was taken out in July of 2014, and seven months later, in February, we informed Mr. Clancy of the Building Department that it was no longer a renovation project, that it was now a teardown. And there was never any inspections done. We were in full communication with several departments at the town hall about the situation, and we are on continuous communication basis during this time. And we would like to move forward and build a new house as quickly as possible and put this behind us. And we were told that had we requested that the permit be extended at the time, that it was possible, but we were never informed that that was an option. Otherwise, we would have done it. And I...I'm requesting that you consider the unused portion of the permit be credited to a new permit, and that I be placed on the agenda for December 1st. And if there's a possibility that a decision could be made before December 1st, I would appreciate it tremendously, regardless of its outcome, so we don't have to suffer any more delays. I believe my situation has special circumstances. I never wanted to tear down this house. I wanted to renovate it. This was not by choice. It's been stated very clearly that Hingham's practice is not to give refunds for unused portions of renovation permits. My request is for a credit and not a refund. I've been encouraged to go forward and pay for the new permit while I wait for an answer on my request. However, I fear if I do that, my request becomes a refund and not a credit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question. So your...the property was vandalized, and that caused you to have to do the repairs?
Yes.
And then you initiated the process. How much did you pay?
For the permit was $1,690.
And you're...so you're gonna do the whole place?
It has...the house is being torn down and rebuilt. So we're gonna need to get another permit to rebuild it, and we were unable to use the existing one that we had. So I'd like to credit it towards the new one, which is gonna be twice what it will be. So we'll still be paying more money.
Right. So in other words, the $1,690 would be credited towards...
Well, not the whole thing, because we did use $14,000 of that to gut the house. So we...there is some part of the portion that was used, but there was a lot of it that...oh, sorry, that wasn't used. So I think it comes down to about $1,550 that was unused portion of the permit. Does that make sense?
Well, I don't know what the number is, but this was...so, and so you will be doing a lot more work, and therefore you'll incur more expense on the permits. You'll be paying more money either way. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's true.
Okay. And...do we have a process, Ted?
Sure. If I could, Mr. Chairman and Paul, I would answer the whole board here. We've met with...I don't remember your last name.
Caitlin Stanton.
Stanton. Earlier this week, we set up a meeting for...Tom, what day are we meeting with Mike Clancy?
Monday. I've requested a meeting with Monday.
Monday, we're meeting with Mike Clancy and the property owner to go over it. Mike Clancy has made a different recommendation to us. We'll vet the issue and bring it to your attention. If you guys wanna have it on the agenda, we would communicate that to Ms. Stanton. Ms. Stanton decided to come here tonight, just to make sure that you heard this, in case...I think she felt maybe it wouldn't go through that way, so she wanted to do that, and that's her right. But we've communicated to her that we will vet the issue, give it to you for decision, and let you decide as to what you wanna do.
That's true. My fear was not that it wasn't gonna be communicated. My fear was that, because Mr. Clancy...I was in the office earlier, and they told me that he was booked solid. So our meeting is supposed to happen Monday, but I don't think that's gonna happen. So it was just...and Thanksgiving's coming, so I'm thinking that we're looking at next month's...and I just want this over.
I understand, but, you know, we issue about $1.2 million worth of building permits a year. Making a change in one might have a lot of effect on others without understanding all the implications that are there. We need to speak to the Building Commissioner, who's made it clear that he doesn't think we should refund or credit the amount accordingly. And I just need to get to those facts, so that I can give them all to you, so that you can make an informed decision, because I think you're just hearing one side of the issue at the moment.
Right. And we'll wait to hear what comes back to us, but I will just tell you that my nature is I'm very sympathetic to the fact that you didn't cause this problem, and that you've been in communication the whole time, and, you know, there seems to be...there may be some room, at least from what I'm concerned, to resolve this thing, so that you're helped at least a small degree, in my opinion. So I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Is that it?
Yep. Thank you.
Anybody else? Just no one, please join us at the table.
Rick Nowlan, Director of Assessing. Greg Hall, Chairman of the Board. For how many years now?
30.
30 years. Okay. We're here today for the classification hearing. The selectmen are charged with making the decision of having one tax rate or splitting the rate. I already gave some of this information to you. What I'm reading today might be slightly different, but the split rate does not change the town levy of the town, the total levy of the town. It does not increase the revenue for the town. It does not determine the tax rate for the town. In fiscal '14, the selectmen formed a special committee. In open forum, the committee reviewed the split rate situation. The committee recommended that the percentage of residential and commercial would need to change dramatically to consider a split rate. We're currently about 11.3% commercial and industrial property, with an additional 1.7% personal property, which falls under commercial label, for about 13% total. This ratio has remained approximately the same for the past several years. The charts I provided to the selectmen show a split rate situation of 120 and 150 factor. Using an average property value, a 120 factor would save the average property owner of about $111, but costing the commercial owner an additional $3,432. A factor of 150 saved the homeowner about $596, which is a nice savings, but it cost the commercial owner an additional $9,232. We have the Derby Shops, the shipyard, some nice office buildings, restaurants, but the largest percentage of our commercial owners are small retail, office, and restaurants. A shift of even 120 could put many of them out of business. Looking at Hingham in comparison to some towns with a split rate, using $600,000 as a figure, at last year's tax rate, it would be $7,472. Quincy, which has a split rate, $8,600 for the residential, $17,600 for the commercial. Weymouth, $7,680 for residential, $12,666 for the commercial. Hingham's taxes are not really high in comparison to most towns and cities. Property values are high, and higher than average due to the popularity of the town. I believe that the Board of Assessors, the Board of Selectmen, have done a great job keeping the tax rate down, and the Board of Assessors believes that there should be no split rate that should keep at a single rate at this point.
Questions from my colleagues.
I'll just add what Rick said about the group in '14. There were actually two groups that preceded that. In about five-year increments earlier, they came to the same conclusions. The facts remain the same. We just don't have enough of a commercial base to split the rate and effectively, you know, allow for that to occur.
Any questions?
Sure. Ted, would you repeat that about every five years?
So we've done...since I've been here, I've participated in at least three studies of splitting the tax rate. The last one was in '14. You know, I don't remember the reports that came out of each one specifically, but I know that each one came to the same conclusion, that with about 85% of the town in residential property tax class, splitting the rate to the commercial just wouldn't provide any benefit of significant merit to the resident without literally destroying the business side and then further backlashing as those values decreased a year or two later, seeing the residential property burden go further back up because of the impact of the business community. And it was the result of each of the groups that looked at it, and I gotta say now, it's 20 years now, came to the same conclusion each time. And it was always a different group of people, too. Except for Greg. Greg was involved in every single one.
Is there any communities similar to ours in terms of the percentage of commercial that are doing things differently than they did 10 years ago, or is it...
No.
Not to know of.
Most of the splits are, as Rick alluded to, Weymouth and Canton, I think. You're looking at splits where they have, you know, more of 50/50, or 40/60 type commercial to residential base. So it's a little bit more...I mean, if you're at a 50/50 and you split, then you can see some real value and real savings. And there's some rationale to it in the structure of government, because 50% of your community is dedicated towards a commercial activity. 85% of the community here is dedicated to residential activities.
Thank you.
No questions.
I'll entertain a motion to continue to tax all classes of properties at a single rate.
So moved.
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for not mentioning the Red Sox.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, 96 Central Street, gas service. Colonel Mullen.
We have Harry Sylvester in the room for the DBW team.
Mr. Sylvester, please join us at the table. Colonel?
Yeah.
Greetings, gentlemen.
Evening.
Are you tonight?
Good evening, sir.
Just identify yourself, sir, and tell us what you're looking to do here.
So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Kent. I'm a project manager for the Massachusetts Military Division with respect to the boiler replacement project at the Armory, which is located at 96 Central Street.
Good evening. I'm Colonel Tim Mullen. I'm the State Quartermaster in the Military Division. By state law, Chapter 33, Section 15, I'm responsible for care, custody, control of all state military buildings and the Commonwealth. And that includes our 45 armories to include Hingham.
Okay. What is it you are proposing to do down there, sir, that you want this relief?
So, the situation in general is that we have performed a boiler replacement. The project is nearly complete, with the understanding that National Grid could provide a gas service upgrade, but the permit has been denied because the road was under moratorium. So we are seeking a hardship and a waiver of that denial.
All right. I'm sure Mr. Sylvester, who's present with you, has informed you that we have a policy in town where we don't open up the roadway if it's been paved within five years of the request, absent exceptional circumstances. And I see that you've provided a memorandum for the record dated 7 November 2016. Are you the author of that?
Yes, sir.
And how is it that this particular facility is used? Could you just describe for the audience and the public?
So, the facility is a state-owned building leased to the federal government for purposes of providing a readiness center for the Massachusetts Army National Guard.
What does that mean?
It means that it's there for training and administration for a military unit. That's its primary function, but it's also a location for an emergency shelter for the public. It's also a location for an emergency operations center during times of civil distress, most notably weather. I think usually every year, there's some type of weather event in the region, and they set up state police and locals and MEMA there as well.
Okay. All right. How long has it been without heat?
It's been without sufficient heat for two and a half to three years. So the boiler had failed in 2015, the winter 2015, 2016. We had temporary heat last year. We currently have temporary heat this year as well.
And that, I take it, isn't really meeting the needs of the mission?
No, sir. It's basically freeze protection, and it's very expensive as well.
If I can just say, sir, fortunately, this time of the year, we've had some warm weather. But basically, as John said, it's really there for freeze protection. So once we go down to the 40s during the day and the 20s at night, it's gonna have a direct impact on the building, and plus our soldiers that work there, particularly with the upcoming season of winter storms. If we have to use that again as a shelter in place, or to launch our troops out for flooding along the coast, things like that.
All right. Thank you, Colonel. Questions from my colleagues.
Thank you. In terms of the permit, when was it applied for?
So I'm not sure on the exact date, because it was submitted by National Grid, but it would've been in the August/September timeframe?
August 19th.
Okay, of this year.
That's right.
And then the actual problems with the boiler were when? Roughly when was that? Was that two years ago, last year?
The origination was in 2015. That was when it truly failed.
And what I can add, sir, is when that building, as John mentioned, has a federal interest in it, and the boiler is paid for half and half...
I saw that.
...by state funds and the federal. So it takes a while for, number one, for the feds to get the money. It takes even longer for the state to get the money. And we finally got the money through DCAM, our Division of Capital Asset Management Maintenance, and we were able to combine that with the federal and put in the new boiler.
And the reason why I was asking is, I understand the moratorium had been in effect for a period of time, and when it failed, it was after the fact. So it really puts you in a position where you really weren't expecting to have to do the replacement prior to the moratorium. So it put you in a tough position. I tend to be somewhat sympathetic, especially in this case, obviously, but I just wanna know the timeline.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You good?
I am. But the boiler was failing two and a half or three years ago?
Approximately, yes, ma'am. It's...I think the boiler in there is probably 50 years old in there.
Yeah. I'm just saying that two and a half to three years ago was around the time Central Street was paved. It was paved in 2013. When...what other heating alternatives does the facility have?
At this point, ma'am, we're looking at either gas or propane.
Yeah.
I had difficulty getting a contractor to provide a quote for propane. I did have a smaller company come out and take a look, but they wouldn't even provide a quote.
Yeah. I mean, one of the things that, you know, a couple of years ago, actually twice, some residents came before this board, an ex-veteran with a young family, a newborn child. And on two occasions, the board noted that there were alternate heating sources available. And what I'm having difficulty with is saying no to a family because they had an alternate heating source potentially available. And I'm kinda wondering if there's something that's available here. And I'm not trying to un...you know, I'm not trying to impose an additional hardship on you, but I'm looking at consistency as well, and that's something that's important to me.
Yes, ma'am. I think one application of the consistency formula, where for that family and, you know, the trials and tribulations they went through for their household, what we're dealing with here is a larger facility, approximately 20,000, 22,000 square foot facility. So the possibility of alternative heat, as you may be aware, I think it was last heating season, we had temporary heat in there. We had some complaints from the neighbors, and the local state senator brought to us our attention. We tried to compensate for that. And one of the issues we face with propane is from a force protection perspective. Propane is basically a bomb, for lack of a better description, to a terrorist. So we would have to put that underground as a requirement, probably. And those are additional costs, too. And the system itself probably would not provide sufficient heat to the building if it were in place.
The heating load is 2.5 million BTUs, ma'am.
And my understanding is that if this were also to be done, I know that the Armory has been used by...you folks have been really generous about opening up to a lot of civic organizations. My understanding is that there is still an issue with fire alarms and with lead paint that would preclude community access to that. Is that correct?
The lead paint...to the best of my knowledge, I'm not the project manager on the lead paint.
I'm sorry if I'm asking a question that you're not familiar with.
But I do know that it's being worked. They were doing testing the last time I was there.
Yeah.
So I know it's an item of interest, and that they're working to reduce the levels or to identify if there are any levels.
And what we do with the lead paint, ma'am, and I can get the stats on Hingham, but my...in my mind, I don't believe that's an issue, because the way we look at it is public access areas and non-public access areas.
Yeah.
And the lead paint is normally found in the basement where the old firing ranges were.
Yeah.
And the public access area, the drill shed floor, to the best of my memory, Hingham didn't have any hits above the required level.
Yeah. And this may be some, you know, another group that we're dealing with, but I know just this past October, there was a group that was unable to secure an occupancy permit because of some lead paint issues. And I also understood that maybe there was something with the fire alarm. So I'm kinda not sure what the status of those are.
I think one of the things the board could consider, and just as you define these very difficult request issues, is it was my understanding, and our Veterans Affairs Officer brought this to my attention, Keith German, that this Armory and this facility is the central point for, in an emergency, for providing the food to all the other National Guard units within the state. And that's why...one of the reasons why the heating is being changed and the gas for the stoves and things like that. If you could comment to that, maybe it would help the board.
Yes, sir. And the...so what that alludes to is that the unit that is located there is a logistics unit. Their primary function is, in fact, food, food service, and shipping, trucking, that kind of thing. So that is their mission when they're state-activated.
So during, like, winter hurricanes or snowstorms, they would be basically the local focal point to distribute, basically from Newbury Port down to the, you know, farthest reaches of the South Shore and then windsur.
Questions from the public.
You haven't mentioned Greg Hall, 583 Main Street. You haven't mentioned the fact that we, for 52 years, we did cabaret there, and last year we did not have it because the place was like the Arctic. And that is to don't get discouraged, then we won't have cabaret for two more years. And it's a stalwart function of the community center and fundraiser.
I understand that, but I also...it's my understanding that there may be some other factors as well that would preclude cabaret, as well as other events, from taking advantage of the space that we've enjoyed for so many years at the Armory. So I think even if we were to open the street and this were to happen, there still could be impediments to doing that.
My understanding, and I spoke to the director of the cabaret, is that she has communication from you folks that they will not be able to use the facility this January or next January, regardless of the heating system. It was a lead paint issue, is what they were told.
Right. No, and that's sort of old information, sir. Because what we're doing with the lead paint, when they applied for the Oktoberfest permit, there were areas down in the basement area where the indoor firing range, the IFR, was located. And then there was one spot off to the right on the drill shed floor, and then one spot where the public latrines or bathrooms are. And basically, we said we could lock, basically barricade those areas off, and they could use, you know, the drill shed floor. But I think logistics-wise, that wasn't sufficient for them. But what I can do is I can verify with our industrial hygiene office, our safety office, what the current status is on the Hingham lead paint situation. I believe, well, we have a program overall for all the armories, where we've done cleaning and testing, and I believe Hingham has been cleaned and tested. I just know...I just don't know the results.
And just to add in, regarding the fire alarm system, the project was sufficient in size that it'll be inspected by the state plumbing inspector and the local fire inspector. So if it is deficient and it does require an upgrade, that will be required in order to finish the final permit.
Thank you.
Motion?
Please.
Make a motion to grant the waiver to the town of Hingham's rules and specifications governing street excavations adopted by the Board of Selectmen in 1986, as it relates to work being completed at 96 Central Street per requirements provided in a letter dated November 10, 2016, from the Department of Public Works.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Majority.
I'm abstaining. I don't think that we had enough information at the time of discussion.
Mary, see me after. See me after.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for coming by. Thank you. Thank you, Harry.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Your next item is disability awareness. Disability awareness. Gentlemen, join us, please. You gonna come up, too? Good evening, sir.
Thank you, everyone, for having me. My name is Jamie Breen. I'm a resident and constituent and a employee of the Town of Hingham Recreation Department. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I know that everybody has other things on their agenda, so I really appreciate taking the time to listen to me. Like I said, my name's Jamie Breen. I'm also, other than being an employee of the town, I'm also a motivational speaker and local community advocate for disabilities. And I live with several policy, but I'm not defined or limited by it. Most people think that my story is about perseverance, overcoming my challenges. But it is mostly about awareness and acceptance for all people. I have a new perspective because of the personal loss of my older brother. It is all about positivity and inclusion. Over the past two years, I have worked in the community and throughout Massachusetts promoting this message. Life is too short. Recognize every day as a gift. Try to set positive intentions. Embrace everything as it happens. It does not need to be a special day to be a great day. It is important that we all do things for ourselves and others, especially those who are close to us, to make a positive impact on the community. If we truly make an effort to be inclusive and to accept others and all the challenges, because I know that everyone has responsibilities. Everyone has things that they do during the day, and sometimes you just go through the motions as part of a routine, and then the days just go by without really even noticing that it's the end of the day. And then the days just go by without really even noticing that it's the end of the day. So I am here today to advocate for inclusion, acceptance of, of all people. And I wrote something, but as, as I've often found in the past, it means more if it comes straight from, straight from your heart as a person. And it means more instead of reading robotically off a piece of paper. I've seen a lot of great things since I've been an employee of this town, seen a lot of acceptance and good things going on. And I want to advocate for a, a awareness group so that people can come into Hingham and have, have a support group and have, have their voices be heard. And I have no problem being that person who advocates, who's the voice for that. I, I have no problem, you know, being the person that is responsible for doing it. I, I've always wanted to make a difference for those with disabilities. Like I said, I know that, I know that all of you have other responsibilities. I know that if you don't, if you're not affected by it on a daily basis, you might not often think about it. But I'm sure if you take a second, like I said before, I think it's important that we all recognize that everybody has hopes and dreams. And all I want to do is create a sense of community and belonging. And I hope that this starts a conversation that doesn't end as a result of this meeting and that we can do something to create awareness and we can do something to create a, a voice for those with disabilities in this town so that we can talk about it as something that is just a regular conversation so that people aren't afraid to talk about what, what they aren't aware of. Sometimes if you don't encounter it on your daily basis, it's hard to, you know, know what to say or know what to do. But I, I know that a lot of the things, a lot of the things that are confusing is only as a result of people's inability to ask the right questions. And I, I want people to know that it's okay. And it's more than encouraged by everybody to just ask the questions. There's no wrong, there's no bad question. And I am more comfortable with myself and to be a voice for people. So I want to thank you for your time and I want to thank you for listening to me because personally, this is a message that is very close to my heart. So thank you very much.
Want to share this with them all?
This is, this is a book I wrote last, last year. It'll be a year since it has been out. November was the month that it was published. And there was a book signing down at Bonwood Books and Toys, the local bookstore in Cohasset. And it's about my personal story and a lot of it has to do with the message I'm sharing here today.
Book is titled Keep It Rolling.
Yes.
By James, Jamie Breen.
Yep. And it's, it's my way of being a voice for those in the community and it's...
You said there was gonna be a book signing?
There was, there was last year. So it's now available on Amazon.
And I'm sure if anyone does have a copy and they want to come over and get a signing of it, they just come over to Hingham Town Hall, find you somewhere.
Yep. I'm here on Tuesdays down in the rec, so I just wanted to come, come before you and share my message with all of you. And I really appreciate you taking the time to hear me.
Thank you, Mr. Breen. Thank you very much for speaking tonight.
Yeah, and I would, I would, you know, if any of you have any ideas about how we can create a support group or, or have opportunities for those with disabilities to, you know, come together and have their voices be heard, I would definitely be more open to, you know, helping to organize that. Because I think it's very important that we put issues, positive issues like this in the forefront and, and make it a, make it a very focal point of the town. Because I care about places I work. I work in Hingham and I live in Situate. The two towns aren't too far away from each other. I, I genuinely care about the community, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Jamie, the, you have an email address, too. Would you like to share that in case people want to reach out to you?
Yeah, I will, I will accept emails and comments from people. My email address is jmbreen55@gmail.com.
And I just want to say that, Carly, you're an inspiration to all of us in this town and in Situate. And we're, we appreciate all you do, not only for the Town of Hingham as an employee, but for people with disabilities by speaking up and offering yourself out. That's, that's very powerful.
I just, I just want to, you know, be able to use what I can, use my talents and use my knowledge to make a difference. And I know that, you know, by being a positive role model for the community, that's one way I can do it.
You're doing a great job, by the way.
Thank you, sir.
I second that.
I'm so glad you came and, you know, you clearly are speaking from your heart.
Yeah.
And, and that really, it's, we read some of the materials in advance, but when, when it comes from your heart in person, it, it has a different meaning.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do motivational speaking, so I try, I go around to different areas throughout Massachusetts. And most of the time, I do write stuff. And I, I use that as a point of reference, but most of the time, it has a greater impact when it comes straight from me.
Yeah. And it, I would like to take you up on your offer to continue the conversation so I may come and find you on a Tuesday. I especially appreciate you're asking people to ask questions because I think sometimes awareness starts with having, you know, having some conversation. And I think your message is particularly important this time of year. We've just finished a really contentious election where I think sometimes we've kind of lost sight of some things. And you're helping remind us of what's important. And I also think that next week is Thanksgiving and it's a time to appreciate and treasure and take the time to, to spend time with people.
Yeah.
And I think this time of year, we can all get caught up in a lot of the, the things that have to get done. And we sometimes let that get in the way of the people that are most important to us. And so I appreciate that reminder, too. And I'm gonna carry that with me in the holiday season, so thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome. I, I, I did, I did, I did, you know, I was very lucky to be able to come up and talk to Tom about, you know, doing this. And I wrote something. I never really got all the way through it, but I'm very, everything I, everything I did say, everything that I did get out, it was straight from me. And I would definitely, like I said, I would definitely be more than happy to, you know, I've seen a lot of people with various disabilities use the fitness center. You know, young and old, everybody comes in. There's an article on the wall that says, "Fitness is Ageless." And there's high school kids all the way up till 96-year-olds that use the fitness center. And they, more than anybody else, have, you know, physical challenges of getting around, but, you know, they still get out there, they still get it done. So it's very inspiring for me to see that. And I, I just, I want people to have a voice. That's my biggest, my biggest goal is for people to have a voice. And that if you want to see something get accomplished, that, that you can come to a place like this and, you know, people will hear you. And you're not, you're not just saying something and it falls on deaf ears or you say something and then nothing gets done. And I, I really want, you know, in the future, if we can establish a support group where people can come and share their thoughts as far, as it pertains to inclusion and acceptance, I will be the first person at that door and I will help to organize it because I think it's really important.
We appreciate you being part of our community.
From the first time I worked here, I knew that it was, people were gonna help to make the community a better place. So I'm happy to be an employee.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming, Jamie.
Thank you.
Jamie gave a little segue there. He mentioned Tom, so I wanted to point out to you that this has primarily been Tom's initiative and he's run with it. He's done a great job.
I appreciate it, but the, the impetus was from Mr. Breen.
Go. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for having me here.
We'll talk to you soon on that, that initiative, okay? We're still, we're gonna work on that.
Next item on the agenda, appointments, although I'd like to, I think for the position that we have one new application, but I don't, I'd be inclined to meet with the gentleman?
Yeah, I think there was some confusion about how it came to us. And so you've never met the gentleman. You're asking to put him on the town's audit committee. I think you should, pretty, pretty important committee. You might want to just meet with him once, make sure.
Sure. That's good, yeah.
All right, we have a couple more motions. I see the chief here.
It's good to see you. Long time no see.
Okay, just didn't want to overlook anything. I'll entertain a motion to approve the request of the Hingham Downtown Association to close Main Street between Elman North Streets and South Street between Central and North Streets and to use the sidewalks for Christmas in the square on Friday, December 2, 2016 from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
I'll move it.
Second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Entertained a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt license to the Hingham Maritime Center for a holiday social to be held on Thursday, December 8, 2016 from 7:30 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the Ames Chapel.
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay. To mail.
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Alexiades.
I will just remind the board that they will be getting their budget, all three of you will be getting your budget packages shortly, hopefully on Friday or Monday.
I just, you know, Ted just like gave like 20 words, but I just think it's important for the public to know that there are hundreds of hours that go into those books. It starts with all of the departments preparing a budget, Ted and Tom meeting with the departments, our accounting office putting them into the system, the selectmen's office putting it all together. Ted puts together a narrative that kind of tells the story of the budget. So I just would extend appreciation and thanks to everybody involved in that effort because it is, it is literally hundreds of hours. And for us to have, have that information as we go into budget hearings, I think is just so invaluable, particularly, you know, when you consider that this is a $100 million enterprise. So thanks to everybody for that.
And so I intend to give you on December 1, your next meeting, an overview of the fiscal '18 budget along with the budget book. And I'll go through it for you in case you have any questions. And then you'll be off and running on your budget hearings.
Will we get the fund balance memo in that book or does that come out separately?
I'll be giving you, I'll be giving you the fund balance memo probably before your meeting, so of course you can review it, but I'll review it with you on December 1 at the start. So to open the budget process up, I'll overview the financial forecast, do the fund balance memo, and then, you know, walk you through the budget as you start meeting with departments on that night.
Thank you.
And I have nothing else to report.
Just briefly, if I may.
I just, and I don't know if I'm beating you to the punch, but I would like to, and I think we all would, like to wish the girls' soccer team, okay? Did I, did I steal your thunder?
It still sounds good.
I was looking on my phone for the, the email about the location, so maybe you have it.
I'm waiting, too, but you know, I don't.
It's 11 o'clock on Saturday in Lynn, and I think it's Madden Field or, it's 11 o'clock in Lynn, and I'm sure if you go onto the soccer website or the high school website, it'll be there. But congratulations to the coach, congratulations to the athletes, and best of luck on, on Saturday.
So that, that's great. And encourage people to try to get there, you know, it's a, they're a great group and we're very lucky. But the only other thing I was gonna wish is make sure is that I wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving. I know it's probably one of the best holidays that I know of in terms of families getting together and spending some time that are more devoted about spending time with family and less about material things. So I just encourage everybody to, to enjoy and to have safe travels and we'll see you on December 1.
I'd like to extend my appreciation to all of those, in particular, the Veteran's Service Officer and the staff for the Veterans Day celebration that we recently participated in and enjoyed immensely. I thought it was one of the, one of the best, if not the best, I've experienced in a, in a long time. Interesting vote on the Armory tonight. I worked the Blizzard 78 and the Hurricane. I know the mission of the Guard. It's, it's a tough one. And I, I understand we can't allow the exceptions to swallow up the rule, but I felt that the mission was of overriding importance. So that having been said, I will also note historically that public broadcasting had a show on the Chosens Reservoir a couple weeks ago, and that battle is marking its 66th anniversary on, on Thanksgiving. So that's what conflict with the Chinese looks like. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Good night.